Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Workshop of Monday, August 1st. I'd like to open the meeting at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please, starting with Ms. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Baptiste.
Yeah.
Ms. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Corbett.
Here.
Mrs. Schultz is here. Also present is Mr. Buckland, Mr. Rowley, and Ms. Baldwin. Going through the agenda, is there any preliminary business that we haven't discussed that we want to -- nothing to bring forward? There's no public hearings scheduled for tonight, no continued public hearings. The one item of business is a discussion of the stormwater bylaws and MS-4, and a discussion of how we need to address the required changes. And I believe, Mr. Buckland, you're going to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. I have some slides to show you as well, too, to run through and give us some keys. There we go. So I wanted to start off with some of the requirements of the MS-4 program, and where we're coming from and where we're going to. So, next slide. So that's what MS-4 means, that there's the four S's, separate storm sewer system. And that's for any kind of municipal storm drain. That's the purpose of this permit that the DPA regulates discharges from. And it's within what's called the urbanized area of the town. It's part of the larger or older National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that was granted to the state by the federal government, the US EPA. And it is a special permit that was issued just for Massachusetts. EPA goes to each state and sets up the permits that they issue. Sally knows that very well. And it has criteria and details that actually reference the town of Wareham in it as well, as well as some broader requirements that meet the discharge elimination system. The idea is that we're responsible for everything that comes out of the storm drain pipes, and we have to meet the water quality standards that the EPA has in the Clean Water Act. And that's the reason for this permit program, essentially how it came about. Next slide, please. This is the urbanized area in town. You can see the outline of Wareham, I hope, and the hatched area is what they call the urbanized region. I don't think it includes Fearing Hill, as a matter of fact, but it includes a lot of the more densely developed areas in town. Next slide, please. Included with the program, we have a lot of mapping already. We have mapped out the catch basins and storm drains that we have already mapped, or some information on, and where the discharge points are in town. We have something like 4,400 catch basins, which is quite a bit to take care of. They ask for a cleaning of them every two years, so it's an expensive program that we're not necessarily following to the T.
Question, Mr. Buckland, the 4,400 catch basins, does that include all of the ones maintained by homeowners' associations, like when we approve a subdivision plan?
It includes some of them, yes, it does. Not all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide, please. The MS-4 program lays out six different areas of intent that they want to see the town approach in some fashion. There's public education and outreach, and we have brochures that we hand out at the desk of the Building Department and Town Cork and the Planning Office. We mail them out as well, too. We have public participation. We have public meetings every year, supposedly, that are used to educate and get people involved in the program and get them to understand what the program is all about. There is an illicit discharge detection and elimination program, and this is to catch pipes that are connected to the storm drain that shouldn't be there, or some flow that goes into the storm drain that is inappropriate and is causing pollution that is unmitigated. Then we have the two points that come involved in the regulation that we drafted up here, which was the management of construction site runoff, that is, construction impacts, and that's sediment erosion controls and storm event management systems that are included in the development plan, and the post-construction site runoff, which they're looking for cleaning of the systems and maintenance of the storm drain, and continual sampling of the runoff to catch any pollution that comes through. And finally, they look for the town DPW, or in this case, municipal maintenance, to go out and maintain the systems and repair as needed to meet the program requirements. We have signed a contract with Mass Municipal Association, or the Mass Maritime Academy, excuse me, wrong MMA. Mass Maritime Academy has a vehicle which goes out and samples discharge from storm events, so they're probably out right now with this rain, sampling of storm drains somewhere in town. We've got to report to the EPA every year on what we've accomplished. And currently, what we're doing is developing regulations that were in accordance with the 2016 MS-4 permit from the EPA. It's been updated. There is a 2022 permit. It's been updated, but the basic requirements are still the same from the 2016 permit. So, next slide. They give us lots of opportunity to do it right. Hard to read, but the gray cover on the right corner, upper right corner, is the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook that has details on structures and methods for controlling stormwater runoff and reducing total suspended solids and phosphorus and nitrogen. And the EPA has the Stormwater Management Opta tool, which allows you to figure out what's the most cost-effective method of which best management practice you should use for the particular situation you're in. So they make it somewhat easier to use than you might think, but it still requires engineering to, an engineer, to do it properly, to go in and take the flows that are required, the rainfall events, and figure out how much is actually reduced in terms of runoff from the site for nutrients and solids, suspended solids. Next slide. All right. One of the things that we did for the stormwater bylaw in this case was to go through the zoning bylaws and see wherever construction site impacts were included, and Article 12 is where they are located. So it seems appropriate to include the stormwater management system in that section. But what that means is you have to amend other related zoning bylaws to reference Section 12 for the purpose of getting that system in place so that the management of the stormwater and the design is appropriate for the particular project. We also have to amend the subdivision rules and regulations to include the stormwater management and construction site management systems in the rules and regs so that it can be done as well. And as I showed you, we had done an illicit discharge elimination bylaw previously. It was approved by town meeting, but the Attorney General asked for some changes in it, in particular, in the next slide, I think it shows. No, it would be the fee and the inspections. The amendments to Article 12 start off with a change in the area. If you recall, it's 50,000 square feet in the zoning bylaw right now under Article 12. And under the NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Program, the limit is 43,560 square feet, or one acre. We add design criteria. We add construction and post-construction requirements, and we reference the applicable section of the 2016 permit in the bylaw as well, too. So we confirm what is required. Go to the next slide. One problem is that it creates another special permit, which runs into conflict with other special permits that are issued. Right now, the planning board is listed in Article 12 as having jurisdiction. But you may want to have it the same as Article 15, Site Plan Review, in that whatever board has a special permit on the use of the property also takes over the special permit for the construction site impacts and the stormwater impacts. And it would be concurrent with the Site Plan Review, so the information would be the same, and you'd be looking at the same content and the same material and the same impacts, and making decisions as appropriate. And this amendment to the IDDE bylaw that the Attorney General had mentioned, that we have a fee requirement, which they were concerned with the idea of adding a fee, however, this is something that we have to decide if we do add a fee, because it costs the town a lot of money to maintain 4,400 drains, and it may be something that we want to have some income that supports it. I'm not really keen on it as such, but it's something to consider. The other aspect of it was inspections on private property. It's kind of hard to identify an illicit discharge, an illicit connection, if it happens on private property, and we don't have enforcement. One of the things that was done in the bylaw was to put the Health Department as the lead, because they have some additional powers for public health and safety that allow them to enter properties. So that was the reason why they were put into the, as the lead on the IDDE bylaw. So, any questions?
Ms. Quirk.
Just had questions. It's pretty, I know we don't have a lot of control over this necessarily, pretty sizable set of requirements that we're putting on. And I noticed a provision saying that they would, you know, essentially be implemented in different ways depending on the size of the property. And wondered what you had in mind, if there's a way to gear the amount of compliance with the size of the entity that needs to comply.
That phrase was actually part of the original Article 12. It's existing in the bylaw now, and I kind of like it as well, too, because that was one of the reasons why I like to take out the submission requirements, because I think what we want to do is we want to keep them so that they're in relationship to the development size, the size of the project that we're dealing with, or the complexity or the potential impact of the project. And I think that's just the term that makes that, indicates that that's the intent of what we're going to do when we process a permit application.
Would the different requirements be laid out in the regulations, or would it be more sort of case by case?
I think it could be put into the regulations up to a point, but you can't necessarily figure out all situations, so it's case by case.
And so you touch on the regulations versus the bylaws. What's your thinking when you split them up and say, this should be a regulation, this should be a bylaw? Is it the flexibility that you want, or are there other factors as well?
It's flexibility and it's the absolute requirement of the zoning that applies. So to say if you wanted to do a scale of 1 inch equals 20, you'd have to go to get a variance from the Board of Appeals, because it requires a 1 inch equals 40 scale in the bylaw, the way it is right now. So that's the problem that you run into with something that's absolute in the zoning The other is that the rules and regulations, you can interpret and modify if you need to. You can increase the requirement as well, too. You could say, "We want additional information," even though it's not specifically listed in the rules and regs, we can ask for it in the application that comes before you.
He can't hear you.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. So, I guess that leads to another question, which is, what is going to be subject to AG review? Can you describe which parts of it will be subject to additional AG review and which will not, if any?
Any zoning bylaw or general bylaw goes before the AG to confirm that it's consistent with state law.
So all of this will go?
All of it will go.
Let's see. And you had mentioned at a prior meeting timelines from the EPA and a sense of urgency that we should feel about moving forward. Can you describe more to us about what the timelines are and how we should gauge our nervousness going forward based on passage of time?
The nervous scale. Well, just to point out that this was, these regulations were in the 2016 permit, so that's when they wanted us to include it. They haven't come down on us to say that we were wrong for not including it, but it's been six years now, and if my math is correct, and it's, the EPA has an enforcement arm. They've come to visit us already about the MS-4 program that we have in place in town, and they've been in continual contact with us about our program and what we're doing. So I'm nervous when I get a call from the EPA, but they haven't fined us or made threats of any administrative order, so our progress seems to be appropriate and acceptable at this point. So I think we have to continue to advance, because we're at risk, and it is a serious cost to the town if we have an administrative order filed against us.
Do you know if any other towns have had a similar administrative order filed against them?
I know of a few towns around in the southeast region that have had inspections similar to the one that we had. I haven't heard about any administrative orders being issued yet, though.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Mr. Baptiste.
Fine.
Thank you.
Ms. Gleason.
I think I'm understanding where we're going, and I don't really have any specific questions at the moment.
Mr. Corbett. The Chair has a couple of questions.
I expected that.
Thank you. First, is there any funding available from any source to help us either write the bylaws, implement the program? Is there any funding available anywhere?
Yeah, there is some funding, and we've applied for some of it as well, too. We've applied for funding for construction of new systems, storm drain systems that are pollution-controlling and preventing systems.
Okay, so that's the operational side. We can get some support in operating it.
Right, right.
What about in the monitoring program?
In the monitoring program, we're paying for that ourselves at this point.
But so you're not--
We got a discount on it with the Mass Maritime Academy, but--
And then what about the maintenance program, which our Public Works Department, which is severely under-resourced?
Yeah, and that's a headache for them to go out and have to do the cleaning and--
So is there any funding that we know of that we can apply for to help with that?
No.
There's not? Okay. So funding, as usual, becomes an issue. We have another underfunded mandate.
Yeah, that's the problem I have with this program. We got the EPA breathing down our necks, and we have, there's a good reason to have improvement in water quality, but there's a lot of other problems that the town is facing that are, I think, are more severe than surface water quality that has been the same for quite a while.
My next is sort of a statement. I sort of took the lead on trying to help with Article 15, which typically talks about site plan review. And then there's Article 14 and Article 12. In reviewing other towns, some of them make a much clearer distinction in their bylaws. They have specific bylaws for special permit, specific bylaws for site plan review, subdivision control. Some of our bylaws, it kind of weaves through multiple bylaws. Given the time, I don't think we can completely restructure our bylaws, but that was just an observation, that we've got things woven in a couple of different places, and it makes it more difficult for us to--
I agree. It's been patched together and chunks have been put in that have a major impact but aren't clearly related to other sections, and so sort of fall away.
Right. And if I understand from Ms. Gleason, the last time we did a wholesale rewrite, it took a committee of seven or eight people a whole year to--
At least a year.
Yeah. So that's not going to fix this problem in the short term, although that may be something we need to do longer term. Okay, I understood what you said. You have a recommendation on how we ought to proceed to make the immediate-term fixes? Oh, I had one other observation before you answered that. I know we're trying to get to Fall Town Meeting. Do you think it's practical to get, work with the moderator and whoever else we need to work with to schedule a special town meeting at a separate time to address just this specific issue, to give us more time, like we did for the golf course? Does that even make sense? It was just a question.
Zoning is a tough thing to get across to a town meeting. The understanding of the nuances of it is, it's sort of like a cross between something like War and Peace, or something harder to read.
Yeah, well, that was why I was saying, if we scheduled such a big undertaking as a separate meeting, a special town meeting, we could avoid some of the restrictions on the amount of time available to make presentations and speak to points, because it was a focused meeting. That was just my thought or my thinking.
Yeah, there's reason to consider that, but I would hesitate to think that people would want to turn out for a zoning bylaw. I don't think it'd be a big turnout for a town meeting.
May I make a suggestion? That maybe the idea of the special town meeting, save that until we do, if we do, sort of wholesale look at it, but I would hate to sort of use up that chit, so to speak, of getting people out to a meeting about zoning for something less than a wholesale, especially if we're thinking that we might go into a wholesale review of it, which obviously has not been decided. That's still--
Right, it was just--
Just a concept.
It was an idea to--
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a lever in our arsenal, or a sword in our arsenal? I don't want to mix my metaphors.
And I understand the criticalness of this MS-4, and the EPA sort of holding a hammer over our heads, but if we do have something pending that is more wholesale, we might want to, that might be a time when we entertain the idea of a special town meeting for that.
Yeah, I think if we were to redo the zoning bylaw and take a comprehensive review to town meeting, it would be appropriate to have a separate meeting for that purpose.
Okay, so then, I'm okay with that concept. I was just explaining--
Yeah, but I do understand that we've got this MS-4 really, like, on a time crunch with EPA breathing down our necks to get it done, and--
So do you have a thought on what we need to do to get this done?
Well, I think the, if we were to take Article 12 the way I've drafted it up here and take it through town meeting, it would be enough to meet a partial requirement of the, it wouldn't be the subdivision rules and regulations, and I wouldn't take out the section on submitted requirements, because we don't have necessarily time for putting up special permit rules and regulations and going through the public hearing process on that, because that's going to take some thought and time, too.
But we do, we have updates already to subdivision rules and regs, and we could--
We could throw them in as well, too, yeah. That's a possibility, and it's possible we could do the special permit rules and regs as well, too. I'm just wondering-- I'm just wondering, worried about the amount of effort it takes for the board and how much time you have available to spend on this.
I would think that if we decide, or depending on how much we take, we may need a whole separate working group to kind of work with you if there's interest in that, to kind of get it redrafted. I don't know. Or do you need help or you think you've got it covered?
I need input from the board on this as well, too. But there's only so much that I can do to it. And it leaves a question, a policy question about things like exemptions that you have to, okay, and I can't necessarily say what's, what we want town meeting to vote on. So I would say spend some, maybe we can walk through the bylaw, the amendment to the bylaw right now. Do a quick walkthrough without too many questions and just so you're familiar with what's here and we can think about if this makes sense to take it forward to town meeting.
So you think this is close enough for government work, as it were?
Yes, I do.
May I ask a question in that regard?
Two-thirds of a pun, PU.
To the extent that this is being submitted to the AG for review, can we take lots of comfort, medium comfort, or no comfort in the legal review or the adequacy review that they're going to do of it? Or the effectiveness or consistency? What's your thought on that?
I think we'll be fine on a review of this one. This is based on the permit, EPA permit, and has, follows the model that others have included in their bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the AG would find this one acceptable as is.
So in your opinion, it will be and is adequate?
Right.
Okay.
And have we done all the proper, are we planning to do all the proper notifications and postings and hearings? And I saw that there was something else that went down in a ball of flames for lack of proper posting, I believe not by us, but the Tremont Nail, was that one that the AGs...
Yeah, that was one. The timing on the Tremont Nail bylaw was, on the announcement of the public hearing didn't meet the timeframe.
Right.
Right now, what we have is the town meeting is probably going to be, the warrant's probably going to be closed on September 23rd or so, somewhere around there. And so we'll have to be prepared at that point to submit whatever articles we want to submit as the planning board.
Yeah, so we just need to, preemptively, I'm saying this, just need to make sure that we've done all the proper...
Notice, yeah, notices in time. And that's, we have to make sure we advertise the public hearing. If you want to go, if you want to take this forward, we've got to advertise the public hearing as soon as we can, because it'll take about three weeks before we can hold a hearing.
There we go. Perfect.
All right, do y'all have a draft of it in front of you? So it references the Stormwater Management Plan for solar arrays, the ground-mounted solar, under section Article 590, and the industrial design standards under Article It refers back to Article 12. And in Article 12, we go through the land clearing and grading and add stormwater management. Because this particular section includes the idea of preventing erosion and sedimentation of inland and coastal wetlands, ponds, and water bodies, controlling stormwater runoff. And that is the basis for the stormwater, stormwater regulations.
Mr. Buck, I said with minimum questions, the amend, or the change to 593.4, do you want to add that first sentence that you added to Article 7, including the Mass EP Stormwater Handbook, Volume 1 and 2, including any updates thereto, in front of, shall be prepared in 593.4?
Yeah.
So that those, both of those read the same?
Good idea.
And then anywhere else, we make a modification? That's a pretty comprehensive statement that I think we could stick in anywhere we need to.
Yeah, I think we look at Article 15, which is at the end, and include that in there, too.
I promise to keep my interruptions to a minimum.
That's right, it's a good interruption. Our next section, 1213, is definitions. And under best management practices, we put in the Stormwater Handbook, the state's Stormwater Handbook, Volumes 1 and 2, and any subsequent updates thereto. I added that and any subsequent updates thereto to cover any modifications that come along in those documents so that they're included. I didn't put in a definition of redevelopment, but that comes from the Wetlands Protection Act. I understand from the Conservation Agent that it's in the Rivers Protection Act, actually. So we'll include the redevelopment that's defined in the Wetlands Protection Act. It's important in this case because the regulations under the NPDS, the MS4, changes if it's a redevelopment or a new development. Under 214, we have the planning board as the special permit granting authority. We can change that. I'd like a read from the board as to whether we should include the wording of Article 15 that says it's the zoning board of appeals if they have a special permit for the use. And it references the idea if it's one acre in size or if it's less than one acre and part of a larger development plan, that it disturbs one or more acres that's included in the review. I changed under 215, the receipt, the response to referral from another board or commission to 30 days, to be consistent with the rest of the bylaws. But it could remain at 45 as well, too. And then to note that the special permit is reviewed under Chapter 48, Section 9, and Section 1460 of the zoning bylaw. Then we go into exemptions. And this is something that had to be changed substantially because a number of the activities that were included in the exemptions under Article, the existing Article 12, are not exempted under the MS4 program. What I left in, the construction of roadways and infrastructure associated with subdivisions, because I assume that the subdivision rules and regulations will be changed to include One term that the MS4 program includes is this idea that we, optionally, we could include something that disturbs less than an acre of land, but creates a certain amount of impervious area that would impact budding properties, that would be reviewed as well. I don't think that's appropriate because if we want to have something less, then we should, we should put in something less. But if we have 43,560 square feet, then let's keep it as one acre. So under Number 2 of the exemptions...
Isn't 600 square feet used elsewhere?
It could be.
And I actually was, it was in the old text, but it is a number that has been used previously or elsewhere in this article. And I was actually wondering where that came from, my 600 square feet.
And we can, we can kick that around a little bit more. Under application requirements, I took out the, I left in the part that Sally had mentioned about the relationship of the size of the project to the necessity for additional degree of information. But took out the rest of the requirements, leaving that to the rules and regulations.
So one thought that I have about, I understand why you're suggesting not to list the requirements. For instance, if it requires a 1 to 40 site plan, then if they want to do 1 to 20, which is, makes it easier to see, they'd have to come before the board to get approval to do that. However, thinking of this from the end user's point of view and from trying not to overload the agenda of this board, it might be nice to list something so that they don't have to come before us for everything to find out what's required. Does that make any sense?
Well, if you include it in the rules and regulations, you'll have the full amount of information that's required. And they have to follow that as required by the rules and regs. That's something that's filed with the town clerk and becomes enforceable on the applicants. But if you, it requires, if you put it in and they don't follow it, it requires a variance and they have to show a hardship as to why they're not doing it. And that's kind of hard to do with the application requirements.
I guess, absent some sort of list, it makes it hard to...
Well, I just think that the list would be there in the rules and regulations.
Okay.
So what you're basically saying is 1217-1 through whatever gets picked up in Mass...
Somewhere else.
And put in a document called Rules.
A different document, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Rules and regs.
Got it.
Which then gets managed, it's still enforceable and in place, just managed differently.
Got it.
That was a question that one of the citizens raised last week. So we should consider if we, if we're moving in that direction, and I think there's reasons to, we just need to be able to explain that to the citizens as to, it doesn't really remove any protections from them. I think the fear is, is that we're going to go off and remove protections in the back office, which isn't how it works.
Is there any benefit to attaching not to this, not to this to go into, but as a piece of paper, attaching those rules and regulations so people see that?
I think that'd be a good idea on this in the site plan review, Article 15 that we have.
As part of the town meeting and then going forward, it just becomes part of our business to maintain them?
Yeah. And it's actually included in the packet so that you're well aware of it beforehand.
Right, that you see that there's a list and...
Yeah, and it hasn't gone away. It's just got moved from...
Right, it's just in a different place so that it's a little bit more manageable.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Then we get into review standards, the part of it. And the stormwater management system is to manage the volume of water of one inch or greater rainfall on the site. And you're using the NOAA Technical Paper, Number 40, for the method to determine the frequency of the two-year storm, 24-hour storm event.
On that note, I didn't see in here, do we make reference somewhere to rainfall, changing the rainfall measures and what gets used and responding to recent citizens' comments that we're not using the most current forecast data? Is that flexibility built in here?
No, it's not. What it says is to use NOAA Technical Paper, Number 40, for the method to determine precipitation frequency for a two-year, 24-hour storm, which is, which is good information. And I don't know how it's updated. Maybe that we can find out what the updates they provide to that technical paper. But this is the latest information as of, within the last year.
Mr. Horsley pointed out some updated rainwater data in his report that Rhode Island is using. Do you remember what he referenced?
Donal Neil Price from Horsleywood.
What did I say?
Mr. Horsley.
Yes, I meant Neil Price from Horsleywood.
I think Mr. Horsley is retired, actually.
We knew what you meant.
Yes, that's, I did mean that. So we've gotten quite a lot of feedback over the last year about rainwater data.
I thought that he was referencing their, the state of Rhode Island's solar bylaws.
Yes, but he was also talking about rainfall. He referenced rainfall in the calculations for the runoff and flow.
From Rhode Island, yeah.
From Rhode Island.
Okay.
He said he didn't make his formal findings, but then he went further and he made reference to them being more current. And I just can't remember off the top of my head what his source was. I think that our goal is, is in rewording this, to make the data that we use be most current and, as it gets updated with new knowledge, rather than maybe being hidebound to something from 1961, which we're accused of. I don't know if that's true or not, but it has been stated.
That's true.
One way to do that is in the document referencing an index or a manual to reference any successor to that manual that updates and essentially provides updated information. So we could consider doing that with each reference like this.
Most current and progressive or restrictive.
Right. Words to that effect.
Yeah, that's reasonable. This is for newly developed sites, by the way, we're dealing with here. So it requires 90% of the total suspended solids to be pulled from the storm water and 60% of the total phosphorus. Whereas with redeveloped sites, which is the next section, it's 80% total suspended solids and 50% for total phosphorus. eighty percent total suspended solids and six, fifty percent for total phosphorus. The next section goes into construction site maintenance, management and maintenance. And, um, this is pretty much existing in the, in the bylaw. This includes information that, um, is be, it goes beyond the MS four permit, but is, uh, is in the bylaw and, um, is, is good for conservation of resources.
I have a quick question. I'd like to back up for one second. I had a thought about the NOAA technical paper forty from, I think, the previous item. Is there any logic to referencing such a paper, NOAA technical paper forty, as posted on the town site? So that we know which one's being used? So that there's never any confusion with somebody looking online and thinking they've got the most current one? Does, is that a document that gets updated? I would assume it is. I don't know.
When I saw that and, and read it, I went online to find out what, what he looks like. And when you bring up the chart that shows that for the New England area, it doesn't go south far enough to include the Cape. So it says it's three inches. Actually, the two, uh, the twenty-four hour two-inch rainfall is like three point four. And that's a, a number that has been used for a long time. But if you look at TP forty for the twenty-four hour two-inch, I'm sorry.
Two-year twenty-four hour storm.
Twenty-four hour storm. The chart that they show doesn't go far enough south. It shows a three-inch, uh, three inches of rain over the twenty-four hours, but it doesn't get far enough south, which actually increases it because when you look at the chart and you go north into Maine, it's less.
It's less. So.
So.
So this is not even really applicable to us. Is there, is there a document that is applicable to us?
Yeah.
That lists similar information?
You've got to go into the USDA, um, stormwater management regulations to see what those charts really look like because they will give you the chart for the whole United States for everything.
Can we?
From two up to a hundred years.
Can we reference that instead of the NOAA TP forty? And I, I don't know how the AG's office would view that, but if that's going to give us useful information and TP forty doesn't.
Well, if.
Yeah.
If you're going to go into this detail, I, I have some concerns about this whole paragraph about the standards here and how to operate that, but I'll reserve it. Go ahead with your, your comment, Jane.
Well, so maybe we should run that by the AG's office or something. Run it up the flagpole, see what happens. I, I don't know. It just doesn't seem to make sense for us to go to all this effort and put something in there that's.
Well, that, that goes to the earlier point is how do we make the bylaw flexible enough so that the standards that we're applying are, one, applicable, but two, the most current and best, the best information available. And then the new point that you raise, how do citizens know or applicants know what that document?
What they're supposed to do.
What that document is, yeah. Which, you're right. Uh, we can't, we can't have bylaws that are ambiguous that the applicants don't know what they're trying to, what target they're trying to hit.
Yes.
So should we strike that?
Well, we need some standard.
We need, yeah. So I wonder if, if, um, just running, running it by the AG's office, because they're the ones who are going to review this, that our town doesn't show up on this TP forty. May we, what are your thoughts on us using this USDA, which is a higher level of government, up one step up? But it does, is applicable to our, the geological
Exactly.
location of our town.
Right.
Uh, so I think it's worth asking them.
It's actually the EPA that we want to ask.
Okay. Who, right, okay. EPA. AG, EPA, they're all the same.
Yeah. F T P, I'll be Jane.
They're, they're more important than we are, so, um, yeah. I think that makes sense.
So in the EPA program, they didn't provide you any guidance on what standard they wanted you to hit?
They, they referenced the USGS HUC twelve, um, standards. I'd have to look that up.
But I do wonder about if we reference outside documents, if we can post the applicable iteration of it on the town website with the zoning bylaw documents so that people know which one we're expecting they'll follow because.
Or as a corollary or an alternative, because these are PDF documents that are posted, we can embed hyperlinks. So you could actually reference link to that document.
Okay, that.
That's just.
That's way more modern than my, my idea, but.
Accomplishes the same objective, but we.
Yeah. I, I just, the thing I'd like to, um, cut off at the pass is.
I'm agreeing with your objective.
I know, I know. But the thing I'm trying to cut off is, is somebody being told to look at a certain document and they go online to find the most recent one and they think they've got it when they don't. Because they don't know, but doing a hyperlink is actually a way to, to solve that.
So one of the, one of the information management precepts that you want to do to avoid that is if we post a document on our website and it gets updated somewhere else, you always want to try and link back to the source document, not a copy of the source document.
But, so the hyperlink is the way to do that, absolutely. But it takes you to a specific place.
Right.
And you're not combing through, I mean, it, yeah. I'm showing my age, anyway.
I think, I think what we do is we, um, go to the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook and see what it says for, uh, uh, basis of, uh, of the, of the review in this area.
But our, our concern is, is that the Mass, Massachusetts seems to be behind the curve on some of these data, right?
Uh, that's a concern, but I don't know if it's true or not.
Ah.
Uh, the, the, the problem is that storms have been increasing in intensity and, um, it's, it's, it's very real, the intensity that's, that's been increasing in, in storm events. And the flooding has been worse as a result, but, um, there's still a percentage chance of, of a particular sized storm of having an impact on the, on the, uh, uh, the systems that are being designed and, uh, you have to, uh, consider that when you're, when you're designing the, the system.
Good. I've beaten that one to death.
So we're on the construction site management plan. Just referencing again the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And then we get into stormwater management system design. And, uh, the best management practices are techniques are construction, um, uh, different designs of, uh, systems of, uh, facilities that are used to reduce the impact of pollution in the stormwater runoff. And, uh, they reference the, uh, the, the tool to, uh, evaluate the, the BMPs. That's one criteria. Also for discharges to waters impaired by nitrogen or where there's nitrogen impact. And, um, just to give you a little background, nitrogen is a limiting nutrient in coastal waters in salt and, um, esterine waters. So that's where you get alga blooms if you have too much nitrogen. But phosphorus is a limiting nutrient in freshwater areas. So you get blooms in the freshwater as a result of too much phosphorus.
I know, I promised, but this is just for me to understand. How does, how would these improved regulations impact our, um, under-capacity sewer treatment system? Does, do these apply to the, to that facility?
The only thing it does to that is to take away the, um, the, uh, the combined flows, the illicit flows from the sewer to the storm, from the storm drains to the sewer or the sewer to the storm drains. That's one of the intents of this is to separate the two. But, but the, overall, the, um, the design of these systems are going to be separate from sewer. So you're not going to have, uh, sewer flows as part of the stormwater drainage system.
And it doesn't apply to, to the septic systems, right?
No, it doesn't. Talks about the removal and what, what is to be removed from the stormwater. And it talks about sediment erosion controls. And there's an interesting requirement for a fifty-foot buffer from waters of the US or an equivalent level of sediment erosion controls. And there should be a reference to the IDDE bylaw in this section as well.
Ken, what is IDDE? Just for.
Illicit discharge.
Okay.
Article twenty-two from the October twenty.
That's the, 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 um, the, the bad connections, the.
Well, the, there is a definition of illicit discharges in the Stormwater Management Handbook.
Right.
And if you look at one of the things, there are ten criteria that every engineer looks at when he submits a stormwater form, where it says, are there any illicit discharges? I have yet to see one where somebody has said yes.
Well, why would you, why would you acknowledge that you're a bit?
Typically, they are defined in a certain way.
I break.
And you do not, in a brand-new system, design anything with illicit discharges. Just doesn't happen.
One would think. One would hope.
I think it happened though.
It's okay to reference it, I mean, but I have yet to see one where they've actually done it.
What are the last two letters? IDDE, illicit discharge. Illicit discharge bylaw. What's the? No, I don't know what the second, what the last two letters are.
Too many acronyms.
Yeah. Alphabet soup.
It's in, it's in the bylaw.
Illicit discharge detection and elimination program.
I'm sorry, I thought it was in the.
There we go.
In the heading.
Illicit discharge detection and elimination. If I burn that in my brain. The, um, the MS four permit also requires the, um, submission of as-built drawings no later than two years after completion of the project. And the, um, the security and the monitoring inspections that are included in them in Article twelve already apply to the MS four permit as well, too. The MS four permit looks for the authority to enforce and issue fines for violation. Uh, I think we've, um, gone through the, um, enforcement procedures of a special permit, uh, pretty, pretty carefully and, um, played often enough, I think we're, we're prepared to, uh, enforce as appropriate. And then there's operation and maintenance required for the cleaning of the systems and inspections at least twice yearly. And that can be done with a, um, operation and maintenance agreement. And that, that concludes Article twelve. And then, um, another amendment goes to Article fifteen to reference the stormwater runoff pollution controls that are necessary in the, um, for projects under Article fifteen.
One quick note under fifteen forty-one, item nine, I would take out the word shall at the beginning of it. All the other, shall is up in the lead-in sentence before the numbered list below.
Right. Parallel construction.
To just say, conform to the stormwater management design standards found in Article twelve of the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Including the Mass D E P Stormwater Handbook, Volume one and two, and updates therein.
There you go.
The lead, the preamble to that.
There you go.
And now another option we have in this is to take the, um, the sections on the stormwater and create a new, a whole new, um, bylaw section just on stormwater. It would repeat, uh, a lot of the sediment erosion control information that was included in Article twelve. But it would, it would, um, be, uh, uh, a discreet bylaw.
Is there any advantage to that? Do you think?
Uh, it's, uh, it's a little cleaner. You can, you, you can, uh, understand it a little easier. But, um, it would be repetitive in a number of ways. And, um.
And then, then we run into the problem if we've got special permit, special, special permit bylaws that get out of sync.
Yeah, you have more than one special permit involved in a.
I mean, we could have, we could have a bylaw for each kind of special permit. And then refer to a common section for the design standards.
That's right. That'd be another option.
Which Article twelve started out to be design standards, right?
Yeah, that's what it was intended to, I guess. But it, it wrapped itself into, um, disturbance of large areas.
That would certainly be worth giving consideration to before doing a wholesale. Be right. And that might be a, a guiding principle to be thinking about making that decision early on and.
And then if we had a, a special permit set of rules and regs, any, they could all refer to it and we could, we could add clauses in there and then a site plan, rules and regs.
Might end up being easier to manage in the long term.
It, yeah, but that then weaves through every single section of the bylaw. It may be harder to...
Yeah.
Because the use tables have to get updated then.
Right, right, yep.
Grant, permit granting authority, as Ken said, it's kind of different woven throughout the, we have to keep that consistent.
So, do you want to think on this some more, or do you want to take this to public hearing?
Can we do both?
You can, you can.
Well, I, I, I would like to see a clean version of the document with all the changes.
Yeah, that might be helpful, to see a clean, clean document with the changes, and then see if there's anything else that we want to tweak before.
Yeah, I guess what we could do is set up a public hearing, anyway, and put it out, and get this, get it...
Get it scheduled, yeah.
Get it rolling.
Get it scheduled, and before the September 23rd, and whatever the date is for the closure of the warrant, and see if there's anything more we want to talk about in the meantime as well.
Yep.
Can we hear Charlie's comments?
Sure. When, are you done, Mr. Buck?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Alley?
I'd like to start with the alteration in what really, how much area is really required, and some of the things which seem to be contradictory. Section 1214, what talks about applicability, the second paragraph, site alteration under the permit will be necessary for all new construction, new development or redevelopment, one acre or more, into projects of less than one acre, when part of a larger common plan or development that would disturb one or more acres. This is typically the situation in a subdivision. If you take a subdivision street, which is 50 feet wide, and 100 feet long, there's 5,000 square feet, so it wouldn't take long to get to that 50,000 square foot area for a subdivision street. But it says here that any portion of that that's less than one acre, but is, is part of a greater portion of a project, it applies to that smaller section as well. So when you go to the exemptions, you really can't say that in 1216.7, that construction on roadway, associated infrastructure, related slope, et cetera, with regard to a definitive plan that's approved by the planning board, you can't say that's exempt. It may be exempt if it's small enough, but nine times out of 10, it's not going to be.
I think the intent here is that it's exempt from this zoning bylaw. It would not be exempt from the subdivision rules and regulations, which we would assume would include the stormwater standards that are included here.
Well, I don't think it makes much sense, Ken, to put it as an exemption in one place, and then refer to it as not exempt in another. That's going to be terribly confusing. It seems to me that if, if you're talking about subdivision rules and regulations, I don't know that you want to say that it's exempt from these, when you know it's not going to be exempt under the rules and regulations themselves.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
Other than to say, projects that are relegated under Chapter 41 would have these requirements, but don't say that it's exempt in one place and not exempt in another.
Yeah, I think you're right. Maybe what we say is that subdivisions are subject to the rules and regulations, rather than saying they're exempt from this, yeah.
Correct. And I would put that in the section where it talks about the applicability, where it talks about this, this special permit. I'd like to see it cleaned up a little bit, so that if you go for site plan review, or you go through subdivision, you've sort of incorporated the site alteration special permit into it. To make it another level of permitting, seems to me, just complicating your job immensely.
Yep.
And then to go along on 1216.9, and say that it's exempt from any use, when there's a special permit from the Board of Appeals of the Planning Board, that's completely contradictory to what you're saying earlier in this whole regulation.
Well, it struck that requirement.
Well, how much of this has been struck? Because some of it seems to apply, and some doesn't. If, if we go back to the chart that Ken had on his presentation early on, there were six provisions listed under the MS-4 permit that are a requirement of the town. Only one of those six, in my view, really applies to either subdivision control or the zoning bylaw, and it's the one that has to do with stormwater. Everything else has to do with an overall MS-4 permit that the plan, the town itself has to implement and carry out. For example, the idea of managing 4,000 catch basins is under the jurisdiction of the town to do. Most of the projects that you see are for, for brand-new construction, where the storm drainage, for the most part, is all self-contained. And for years, the town has always said, municipal maintenance always said, "You cannot discharge anything from your private development into a town sewer system, storm drainage system." If they wanted to, and they found out that there was no other way, when I've done a review to that effect, I've always said, "You've got to show that there's no adverse impact to the stormwater system for you to do that, and then get approval from municipal maintenance department to do that." But for years, it's never been allowed to discharge into the storm drainage system of the town of Wareham. Just is not done. There have been exceptions to that, one being Toby Hospital. It goes underground, and then the overflow from that infiltration project that they have goes into a storm drain that goes out into Main Street. But they're the exception rather than the, rather than the rule. Yes, Carl?
A point of understanding. So if all those drainage systems are not connected to the municipal storm, then none of these controls, monitoring, illicit discharge, we don't get any of those controls. It would seem to me we would want every one of those storms...
Well, if, if there were an illicit discharge out of a private developed area, it would be triggered under the town regulation of MS-4, I'm sure. But the, the things you want to look at, I think, are the pre-construction or construction requirements, and then how you manage the stormwater for any particular site. One of the things that's mentioned, well, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but that's a concern, that we're sure that we've, first of all, covered the basis with respect to subdivisions, and then site plans. I don't have any issues with the other exemptions in here. They're basically the same as they have been. I have a little bit of a concern over how you would apply the waivers, the way that the language is written in here. Personally, I would rather see every project be required to comply with all the, all the regulation. And then, as you do under subdivision control now, you make a statement in the subdivision rules and regulations that says, "The planning board may waive any particular regulation that's in the best interests of the town." A simple statement to that effect, rather than saying, "We'll make a general statement, maybe a small project isn't going to be required to do all of this stuff." As soon as you say that kind of a statement, you're going to be leaving yourself open to all sorts of arguments in front of your board. I would say, leave that alone, just as it is in the subdivision rules and regs, and allow them to be the ones to request a waiver of certain things. I think it'll much easier for you, and nobody will be questioning how much of this you've really got to do. Going to the review standards, and we're talking about the technical paper 40 and everything, Ken, was there a reason why you simply picked out the two-year, 24-hour storm in that? And that's Section 1218.
Yeah, because that's what is included in the draft model reg.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably because they're dealing with the 1-inch of rainfall, or they're dealing with the .8 inches of rainfall for nitrogen removal and phosphorus removal. But when you go to the stormwater regulations, the regulations say you're supposed to do a calculation for the 2, the 25, or the 2, the 10, and the 100.
Right.
And there are certain requirements for making sure that you don't do things that are adversely impacting the next-door neighbor's property with a 100-year storm, that kind of thing. But when it talks about all these requirements for the generation of calculations for nitrogen removal and phosphorus removal, and you get into that optimization tool, I looked at that optimization tool. You've got to be a PhD in physics to understand how you go through that entire document. If, if you guys haven't looked at it, I encourage you to do so. It'll blow your mind. Whereas it talks about alternatives, under Sections 235 and 236 of the general permit of the state, talks about construction site, stormwater, and then it gives a list of various things you can use as an option to satisfy the requirements for nitrogen and phosphorus. So I would, I would not want to say that you must use that opti-tool or whatever it is, because it, it's horrendous. It goes on for pages and pages and pages, of figuring out what temperatures are, what sort of ground cover you have, and it seems to be the kind of a tool that you would use for a project of hundreds of acres, not a half-acre lot, or something within a small subdivision. Am I reading that wrong, Ken?
No, I don't think you are.
So we need, I think, to look at that a little bit, rather than be so specific about the methodology that you use, because they're all alternatives that they say you can use. And if it meets the requirements of those alternatives, it's understood that you have complied with nitrogen and phosphorus control. That's what it says in the regulation. So you don't have to go through this tremendous regulation for doing that. But it may be that in those calculations, the two-year storm is the only one that you have to deal with when you're dealing with 1-inch of rainfall, because that 1-inch of rainfall is really for water quality. It's not quantity, the way that you deal with subsurface infiltration of larger storms, and taking care of all the stormwater that comes off the site. Because it's, in certain instances, under stormwater management, it's a half-inch. In other instances, like a major parking lot, like Walmart or Wareham Crossing, it's a 1-inch rainfall. So those things, I think, are important to, to know. Under construction site management plan, under six, under .8, I guess it would be, forested areas should be preserved, I don't see any definition for what is a significant forest community. That's, that becomes pretty relative, and it can be one thing to one person and one thing to another. So just suggesting, maybe there should be something in it to define that.
Well, and it says, it has the words "as defined herein."
It doesn't say "where it's defined herein." So...
There's a couple places where it says "as defined herein."
Yeah, yep.
They recognize the problem with the regulation, yeah.
Yeah. When, when you go over into the, let's see, which section is it? Stormwater and Management System Design, basically. When it talks about phosphorus removal and nitrogen removal, again, it's talked about specifically in Sections 235 and 236, 2.3.6 of the MS-4 general permit. It says, just as a leading paragraph, it says, "The objective of this is to reduce the discharge of pollutants found in stormwater through the retention or treatment of stormwater after construction on newer redeveloped sites. For the purpose of this part, the following definitions apply." Goes into what a site is, what new development is, redevelopment is. And then it, it talks about, it says, "The permit's new development or redevelopment program shall include sites less than one acre, if the site is part of a larger common plan of development or redevelopment, which disturbs one or more acre." So then it talks about the alternatives you've got. One of them is low-impact development. Another one is to, it says, "The permit shall develop or modify as appropriate in ordinance or other regulatory mechanism within three years of the effective date of permit, which provides provisions that are at least as stringent as the following: one, low-impact development, site planning and design strategies; two, stormwater management system designed consistent with or more stringent than the requirements of the 2008 Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook," which we've referenced. The third one is the management, management systems that meet the average pollutant removal equivalent to 90% of the average annual load of TSH, which is total suspended solids, and phosphorus, which is 60%. That's for the new stuff. And then it gives you four different criteria, which if you qualify under one of those four, it says it's presumed that you meet that standard. So that's why I'm saying, we, we don't want to get terribly specific, other than to mention the, the sections of the MS-4 permit that give you the guidance as to how to do it. But I say, I've, I've gone through that opti-tool. Unless, unless you've taken a look at it, I wouldn't encourage you to pass it the way it is. And the only other thing had to do with, under inspections and so forth, would be how long you want people to make these inspections, and to whom the inspection should be delivered. It's one of the things that, I know we, we're not talking about any particular project, but in one review that I recently did and submitted to you, I suggested that you need to have some sort of a, a method by which data is collected for both pre- and post-conditions, but you need to establish a, within that inspection procedure, who does it, how often they do it, who gets the results of the inspections, and a procedure for what you do with it if you find that it's not meeting certain criteria. So I think that needs to be spelled out a little bit.
That's spelled out in the operation and management, maintenance agreement that...
Yeah, typically it is, Ken, with a lot of the O&amp;M agreements that you see that come in with these projects.
Right.
A lot of times, they're spelled out in the construction sheet of the, of the plans. Other times, they're incorporated into the stormwater management program or the stormwater calculation package that you receive.
Right.
They're not consistent. Sometimes they're on the plan, sometimes they're in the stormwater calculation package. And I think, if, if you recall reading a lot of my reviews, a lot of the times, I will say, "Please incorporate the operation and maintenance plan in its entirety by reference in your special permit." But they don't always give you the criteria under which you could review it, or whether or not you ever see the results of those inspections. So I think there needs to be a little bit more care given to detailing that.
I think what we do is we create a model, or a basis for an agreement, that spells that out and allows them to fill in the blanks.
Yeah, although that it may be, may have to be general, because a lot of times, the criteria would be different from, from project to project.
Yeah, they can fill in the blanks as needed.
Yeah. For example, the one that we recently did for the car wash that goes in up behind Noreya, the sediment control is completely subsurface. So it's extremely important that the owner of that facility abide by the, the requirements that they put in their operation and maintenance plan. But what they will have to do is not necessarily what you would see on a normal basis if you had an above-surface plan, such as what they did at Master Millworks, for example. Whereas everything that's collected, it goes into water quality units to separate some of the sediment, then it goes out into a basin where you can trap for the sediment, and you can watch it on a regular basis. So each one's a little bit different.
Are O&amp;M manuals something that, that tend to get, tend to fall through the cracks?
Well, I can't remember when you've actually had a project where, where it has been mandated that they report to you.
The only reason I ask that is because typically, O&amp;M manuals are something that happens at the very bitter end of the project, and I could see it falling through the cracks because of the way it falls in the process of design and construction, and...
Well, the, the operation and maintenance plan is in two phases. It's in the construction phase, in which they have to do certain work.
Mm-hmm.
Provide temporary sediment... Provide temporary sediment control basins, put in.
During the process.
Filter fabric, or they have to put in siltation fencing or some other method of erosion control. You put in construction entrances adjacent to the paved surfaces, that type of thing. That's one thing which they do during the construction phase in which they have to maintain. The second part of it is what they're supposed to inspect and maintain after everything is built. That's the part that generally falls through the cracks.
Right, that's what I'm just thinking, that in terms of the process.
Yeah. And that very few times is it really mandated, spelled out anywhere, that they have to report to anybody, either the board or the Board of Health or whoever.
So that's an opportunity for improvement as we open.
I think so.
Yeah.
I do have a little bit of a concern over incorporating the Board of Health into this whole process of going through stormwater. They have charged, if a potential, if a spill takes place, for example, they're probably the first ones to get notified after the fire department. And they will go out and they will, under their protocols, manage whatever that incident happens to be. I don't know how equipped they are to really manage the rest of the process of stormwater design and all of that other stuff that goes with it. So other than getting them involved in a particular incident, I don't see where it's going to be beneficial to involve the Board of Health in this process.
I think the intent that I had was to put them into the illicit discharge and have them use their powers to eliminate those illicit discharges.
But I think they already do that, and it's probably an illicit discharge that they respond to.
Yeah.
But when a new project goes forward, there is no way that any illicit discharge is going to be permitted.
Right.
So it's the result of a spill, or it's a result of carelessness, or somebody doing something on purpose that gets.
Malfeasance after the fact.
Somebody involved in it, and they are directly involved in the process of managing that particular incident. That's how they get involved. So it's, yeah, they're involved in terms of illicit discharges, but to put them in the equation of how you manage stormwater, I think is the wrong spot to put them in.
They're not in this section. They're just in the IDD bylaw.
Okay, but isn't that, it's mentioned in here under this whole section that's going to go in under stormwater, isn't it?
The illicit discharge is listed in here as the criteria for consideration, but the Health Department is only in the other bylaw for the detection and elimination.
I would suggest then that you find out really what the definition of an illicit discharge is because in the stormwater regulations, I'm pretty sure it's spelled out as to what they are. And every stormwater management submittal that you get, if it's properly done by the engineer and it's done using the ten criteria under stormwater and the regulations under the state, there's a statement in there that says, you check it off. Are there any illicit discharges or not? And you never say you're going to have an illicit discharge. It's simply not allowed. And the engineer, when he signs his name to it, says, okay, in my project, there are no illicit discharges. So you need to find out what illicit discharges are.
I think part of the issue here is we're talking about management as well as the design criteria. The zoning bylaw here is for, basically for design criteria. But there are other management requirements we have under MS four to, for public participation and outreach and cleaning up our storm drain systems and finding illicit discharges and eliminating them.
But that isn't anything to do with zoning bylaws or the subdivision control law, is it?
No, it doesn't.
That comes under the criteria in the heading of one of those six listed criteria of MS four as to what they want you to accomplish.
That's right.
But as far as this board is concerned, or the ZBA is concerned, that one item that deals with stormwater management is where we get involved here. It seems to me those other things are a townwide thing that don't necessarily involve the planning board, per se.
You're right. You're right. That's what this bylaw is for, the planning board or whatever board is doing the review of a development project
Right.
to include the stormwater management that's required.
Right. I would strongly urge you to consider, before you actually set a date for the public hearing, to go through this a little more. I think there's some things that could be cleaned up. I don't have any objections to the whole thing as a whole. It's just that, especially with respect to Article fifteen, if this is, if a lot of this is going to be pulled out and become rules and regulations, that needs to be identified. And if the design criteria and everything is going to be part of rules or regulations, why do we mention it here other than to say that there are rules or regulations and you put that in there? That isn't clear to me exactly how that's happening.
Yeah. And I'm going to take your thought one step further. Article twelve is design criteria. You're suggesting we need an operations and management criteria section as well. I wouldn't put the operations and management plan in design criteria.
I'm not suggesting that at all, Carl.
Well, you're saying we need reporting and mandated follow-up.
It is a requirement already of the stormwater regulations through DEP that an operation and management plan be prepared. And just about every application you see has one.
It has to get, I'm saying it has to be executed on and followed up on, and that's the part that's missing, is what I heard you say. And I think you're true. You're right.
But it comes in the form of conditions that you impose on a particular applicant for a particular project.
So we don't need a bylaw. We condition it on every project.
Yes, because everyone is going to be a little bit different. You can't apply a broad-brush requirement other than to say that reporting is required in some fashion, to say it's required. But I think the specifics of it need to be addressed in the specifics of a special permit.
Okay. And my only concern is having recently talked to the president of homeowners association, they ignore all the conditions that were on the original, that the developer signed up for. And they don't pay any attention to it or even necessarily be aware of it.
That's probably because when it's written up, it's written up with no requirement that anybody be told what's happening. I mean, they can do their inspections, say, oh, the catch basins look pretty good to me. And they don't look at them again for another year. But if there's a requirement in a special permit, that they have to report as a part of their approval to come back to you or the ZBA, or in some cases to the Board of Health. That they have done the inspections and they've got a log of when they inspected, who did the inspection, and the fact that you've got a copy of it, that's the part that's missing.
That Ken needs twelve more people on his staff to manage all that.
Yeah.
And I agree he should have it, and we should do it.
And that's the reason why I think that this program is is a little out of whack with the priorities of the town. And that there are a lot of other issues that the town is dealing with that are probably more important than the stormwater quality.
Well, not more important, but perhaps more urgent.
More urgent, yeah.
Thanks, Bob. Just one, if I could, one comment about, I forget where it is now, the as-built plans. Forget where that section was now.
It's, yeah.
Item six under.
Page nine.
Yeah. The requirement for as-built plans where it says no later than two years afterwards. Doesn't that requirement, Ken, apply more to a regional facility or a series of projects where this involves, again, large development areas rather than a single small project? For example, take, I don't know, take Walmart, for example. I can understand having an as-built, and the requirements in the MS four permit are for an as-built. But it talks about as-built drawings no later than two years after submission of the construction project. And then it goes on and talks about doing other things at four years and so forth. I can understand the reason for an as-built plan provided it's going to be something that you utilize when everything is said and done. But what will you do with the as-built plan after it's completed? And what do you want in terms of detail on the as-built plans to show?
I'm looking up the section, see if it says anything more on that.
It's section, in the MS four general permit, it's two-point-three-point-six. Three, I think it is. It says, "A new development or redevelopment program shall have procedures to ensure adequate long-term operation and maintenance of the stormwater management practices that are put in place after the completion of the construction project." That's the O and M plan that you see every project that you get. So we're doing that to some extent. The only thing you're not getting right now is as-built plans. But the question I have is, what do you want to see in the as-built plans?
I think the intent here, since it's under operation and maintenance, is to show the facilities that are to be maintained and to show what they should be maintained to. So it is the basis of the O and M agreement.
Well, typically, the as-built plan is going to show the facilities that were approved on the site plan for any stormwater facilities that were shown on the plan.
Right, it'll show them in their built form, which will be what it has to be maintained to.
Right. But I would suspect that, and this is no question as to whether or not you need an as-built plan. MS four says you do. You're supposed to, so you got to do it. But the question is to what level of detail do you want? Because when they're built today, most of the layout and the construction is done through GPS. So a contractor will get a set of the files that were generated, computer-generated files of the project. And he will load them into his system and go out there and lay everything out according to location and elevation as per what that file says, that actual electronic file says. So this stuff's going to be pretty accurate from the standpoint of location before everything's said and done. So you could almost take his plan and simply ask him to confirm the elevations at which one of these particular items has been put without asking him to go out there and do a complete reconstructed site plan, is what I'm trying to say. We used to do that with the Board of Health. They wanted an as-built plan for all septic systems to be sure that they were above the water table like the plan said they were supposed to be, that the pipes had the proper pitch, that the location of things was roughly what it was supposed to be. So what I would do, I would take that plan, that same plan, and I'd have a place for proposed elevations in the profile of the system and a line that was blank that was for the as-built, and all you did was fill in the numbers to show that everything was according to the way it was supposed to be. It's pretty simple to do.
Yeah.
But you don't necessarily have to generate a brand-new plan. So that's why I asked the question, how much information do you want? And what do you want it to be? Because I assume that everybody's going to have a different idea of what that as-built plan's going to contain.
We can add some other details to that. It says it shall depict all site controls, both structural and non-structural, designed to manage the stormwater associated with the completed site.
Right. So I assume that means catch basins and infiltration systems, perhaps.
Inverts.
Size and shape of sediment ponds and so forth, all of that sort of thing.
You see why they'd want to do that, so in case the sediment pond was buried and they know what they had to dig up.
If it gets buried that deep, everybody's in big trouble. But nevertheless, if you feel it's important to define it a little better, it's okay. If it isn't, you could leave it up to the applicant to decide what he's going to do to give you the information. And then decide whether or not it's going to be beneficial to you in the long run. Personally, I think the reporting of their inspections, the frequency of inspections, and what they're doing for cleaning out basins and so forth, for managing it, is probably more important. But if the as-built plan is required, then you can incorporate that, use it. But I think the reporting and requiring them to report back to you as the permit granting authority, if you see something crazy and they're not doing it in a timely fashion, or you're not getting a report within a certain amount of time that you specified in your special permit, you write a letter to the owner of that project and you say, where is your report? You're in violation of your special permit.
I have a quick question. Is there communication between the building department, Inspeccional Services, and your office when a project that's gone through vetting by this board and approval by this board, when it's nearing completion, so that we can then follow up?
Yeah, there is.
Things like that?
There is.
Okay.
I get calls on a regular basis from the building commissioner, at one every day probably, about projects and status and completion requirements and what the boards are going to be looking for before a CO is issued or before a building permit is issued.
Yeah, and follow-up like as-bills and all of that.
Yeah.
Which presumably they wouldn't be waiting two years for a CFO.
I wouldn't think so.
They would want to be getting that CFO, you know, promptly. And then the as-bills can follow, but that's, you know, how to tighten up the floorboards so there aren't any cracks anymore for things to fall through.
Right.
Well, the guidelines say that you can make your regulation more stringent. So if you don't want to wait two years, you could make it six months. Or three months, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the most important thing is just not letting it fall through the cracks altogether.
Right. Oh, there's no question, but somebody's going to have to keep tabs on it. That's why I'm suggesting that if the reporting comes to you and the report comes in and is included in your package at every meeting, or if you know you're supposed to be getting reports from these projects on a regular basis and you're not getting them, then you can follow up on it and make sure that it happens.
It's more likely to fall through the cracks at two years.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to remember to bring it up.
Which means we need a tracking and monitoring system, even if it's paper and pencil.
Yep.
I think I can make the changes that we're talking about here.
And have another law.
Turnaround time. And we could schedule a public hearing and continue the discussion in the meantime as well, as you see fit, if you see time.
Do we want to add this to the agenda next week to see a cleaned-up version of the document?
I leave that to the chairman.
Well, I'm asking, would you be ready? And I don't remember how busy we are next week. Fearing Hill is next week?
Fearing Hill and Article Six hearing.
So that would be. So that would be the eighth, the eighth? Twenty-second, then? Would, does that give us enough time to then fit in the, the public hearing after that?
We have O Route 25 that night, as well as Five Dotty. We have O Route 25 that night, as well as Five Dotty, and I think maybe a couple of A and Rs, maybe.
Sounds pretty easy, though.
So if we reviewed the final version of this on the 22nd, then we could have the public hearing two weeks after that, which is the second Monday of...
September.
September.
But that's Labor Day.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it could be Labor Day.
Oh, second Monday?
First Monday is the, is Labor Day.
Second Monday is the 12th of September.
Yeah, we would need on the 12th, right? And then that still gets us in before the 23rd.
It does.
Assuming that all goes well.
So we could begin advertising the 12th now, or when you need to? Does that schedule work for everyone? August 22nd to see a final cleaned-up version of the related artifacts and a September 12th public hearing?
Right.
Yeah, it looks like even on the 22nd, when we see you guys next, there's still time to advertise it for the 12th, so if for whatever reason, we don't think it's going to be ready, et cetera, we can talk about it then.
Sound good?
We don't have to vote on this, right?
We don't have to vote on it, just consensus is enough.
So, schedule seems to work right now? Okay.
Just, just one, just one further comment, too, about the stormwater system throughout the town and everything. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but I don't think there are any combined sewers in Wareham, but what we have seen is the infiltration of groundwater into the sewer system from external sources, through either cracked pipes or pipes separated or some such thing as that. And I know that that's what Guy Campina is working on to try and eliminate, right?
That's right.
But what we don't have, as a general practice, combined sewers, which means that we take stormwater and mix it with sanitary sewage and dump that to the treatment plant. We don't have that.
So all, all stormwater is just discharged directly into the, one of the public water bodies, right?
In most, in most cases, yeah, yeah. But, but as I have said before, it's a practice, has been the practice, that the town would not accept any additional stormwater flow into their system from privately discharged runoff.
Okay, so that was an important clarification for me. We don't treat stormwater.
No. We happen, we happen to the infiltration, especially in the, in the Swiss Beach area, in Swift's Neck area.
Well, which is where I live.
Yeah, which is, the, the pipes are down into the groundwater, it just is, that's the way it is, and it infiltrates in, so Guy has got to take that water along with everything else. But we don't have a, what they call a combined sewer, such as some cities do, where they take both stormwater and sanitary, flow them all together and then treat it. We don't do that.
Thank you. Okay, so we're good on, we're good on a plan for MS4 and stormwater, right?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Or a schedule, anyway.
We got a schedule now.
All right, moving on on our agenda. Item six, just general board member comments. Sherri, anything?
May I make a request? May I make a request?
That's a comment, so go for it.
This is in relation to the Zero Route 25 project. There was a reference in a recent letter submitted by council for the developer to the, the right-of-way for, for the project, and the statement that this was already in the, had already been submitted. Can't, I can't find that in the record, and I'd like to take a look at that. So if you guys have it and could share it with us, I think I would find that helpful. And that's all I have.
I think, I think what they did was submit a copy of the taking plan, not the plan, but the document, which granted that easement to the various property owners. And it specified that they could use it for any and all uses that are attributed to roadways. I think some language to that extent. It, it's in the document that they submitted of...
The original submission?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you share that with us, if you find it?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Mike, comments? Ms. Gleason?
None at this, at this time.
Mr. Corbett?
I'm good.
Hey, my one comment starts as a question, and then it'll probably become a request. Have we heard back from Wareham Retail Management?
Thank you.
That'll be three days.
Hi, so I think it was at the beginning of last week, on Monday, I received an email from them stating that they would be submitting a, like a work plan before the week was up. The following week, so maybe that was two weeks ago, the following week, I said, hey, what's going on? I haven't heard anything back. So I know that it's on their radar, or it was at some point, but I've reached out since then, and I haven't heard anything.
Okay, so my observation is, is they have not responded within the time really asked. Can we have this as a, on the agenda item next week, at least, so we can speak to it?
Yeah. It's, it's on there, and, and Mike, the chair knows about the situation, so...
Okay, all right, okay, good. So Fearing Hill is next week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, my only comment then on Fearing Hill is, the Conservation Commission continued their meeting, so we're not going to have a report, I suspect, from Conservation Commission by the, by next week.
So they may continue again.
That's a comment, yeah.
They're meeting Wednesday, is that on the agenda then?
This Wednesday? Yeah, I guess they're meeting again. So it's possible we could have, we could have a comment. I, okay, all right, good. That was just a comment.
Okay.
It's board members' comments, I made a comment. Any other business? Charlie, anything? Ken, anything you want to?
No.
You want to say anything?
Nope.
You want to report on the ZBA meeting?
I can.
Under staff reports? Oh, you didn't have staff reports on your agenda.
Do you want to hear about it?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I provided the memo that Jane graciously wrote. It was very clear. They had questions, which I tried to address, and they were clear on most of it, except I think the board really wanted this board to take up a more substantial matter. I think that by this board not taking up the substantial matter in terms of the amount of units that are permitted in the CG district, I believe it is, that they felt that that was, you know, you guys were stating that it's not important. And I indicated that there are numerous important substantial changes, but that wasn't the point, point of this warrant article, and that, you know, this board is happy to sit with them and create a plan for tackling various warrant articles, but I think that they just, they feel strongly that it should be addressed for this warrant article. So they made a plan, and they will appear before you next Monday, and I think it will be fruitful.
Thank you.
By the way, we'd have to have another public hearing announcement and go through the process again, if, if you were to change something like that, more substantial change.
That we could determine after next week, then, right?
Right.
We have a motion on the table and seconded to adjourn. Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock.